It's six o'clock. Want to go ahead? Okay. We will now call the Montego City Council meeting to order, it's December the twenty eighth, two thousand twenty twenty. And we will now begin with a prayer.
Let's pray. Father and heaven, thank you for this day, and thank you for all that you give unto us, and father, we pray to be with our city leaders and help them to make decisions that need to help our community and to make it a stronger and better place. Thank you for their desire to work in our community, help us to support them and strengthen them as they work with us. Thank you for everything that you've done for us, in your son's name we pray, amen.
Doran, can you leave this in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Deb, you want to do a raffle? Thank you, Father.
You're welcome.
Doran? Jessica?
Here.
Marilyn?
Here.
Nate?
Here.
And Jessica Boylock is top person.
She still has to cover it, so we'll go from. And the next thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes from November the thirtieth, twenty twenty. Everybody have their minutes? You've had an opportunity to look over them? Do you have changes to those minutes?
I did not.
Nate?
Not good to me.
Okay, and if you'll notice tonight, Nate has gone there doing the projector because we will have it projected on the wall, folks would need to see the things. Okay, alright, we'll start with committee reports. Minutes?
Minutes, yeah. Amen, that we approve the minutes as written.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna do the nine-one-one report, Wanda, do you care to come up? This is the nine-one-one director, Wanda McDaniel. I have some kind of matter, and when you get done doing your report, then we'll talk just for a minute on the things we've been talking about with Don.
Well, everything's good, you know, we had the bombing. We had the bombing over the weekend and everything, and everybody was down, but now we're up and going, everything's working good.
I know that y'all had requested that we might need an AT&amp;T mobile unit brought in, but we didn't have to do that, correct? We were ready to deploy it if we needed.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone have any questions for?
No.
Well, one of the things that Wanda did, what was it, last week you came in and talked to me about, you know, I'm gonna carry y'all, I'm gonna take this off in a minute. But, um, Wanda has decided to retire. We hate to see her go, and Don Hutchison, is he the chair of nine-one-one?
The chairman, yes.
Okay, and I were talking, one of the things that, of course, she's the director, there's several certifications that, and Don called and asked if I could meet with him tomorrow? And we could post the job for ten days, but there are people that might be promoted before then, you know, he wants to talk about that, but I know their policy still says we provide jobs, right? I mean, we post those, so if it's all right getting with you and Don tomorrow, and the council doesn't have any other direction, and then we would post that position for ten days for her position because she's gonna be resigning, is retiring? Well, actually, she's gonna retire the twenty ninth. So does anyone else have any suggestions?
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow? No, no, next month.
Yeah, yeah, January.
January.
Yeah, the twenty ninth is January. Twenty-two years, I think, yeah. So somebody like leaving home.
So if nobody has anything, you know, to add to that, Nate, do you?
Congratulations on your job. Enjoy.
Well, no, I wouldn't get to do that, but probably.
She's got three grandchildren too.
Yeah.
Doran? Jessica? No. One of the other things that I mentioned to you all, of course, Virgil McNeese had resigned, and he had requested that he retire from the town instead of resign. And I think I mentioned it to you all, and we had to do a letter to post changing his, um, status to, let's try to do the right, thank you, Jessica, his status to retire and would like to do something with y'all, you know, whenever COVID subsided.
Oh, yeah.
Is that mine? What do we need to do here to tone this down? I'm sorry, we're not taking it, we're just trying before you can hear us.
There's something conflicting.
I wonder if the money nights are too close or these three are too close?
Yeah, there's something.
Mine's turned off to stop that.
Okay, alright, but, so, does anyone else have anything for Wanda? Thank you.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Alright, and then, do we have fire department? Is Garen here?
I think Kyle's here.
Well, Kyle, whoever's here with the fire department, please, he had to go to the hall. Thank you for being here. If you'll go right there in front of the microphone. Yes, we do, thank you very much.
So, quick and sweet, all engines, tankers, P R V equipment vehicles are all in service and active, no issues whatsoever. We had one structure fire, one traffic control, one gas field, one leak, four lives assist, two brush fire, six vehicle fires, one alarm, two mutual aids, and one other call for a total of nineteen paid calls. All members will be starting their state certification classes around January the fifteenth. They advise the first week of January, they'll have a list and cost for you all then.
I know that Garen had asked about some grant money maybe that we were supposed to receive back last year in October, and I told him I had talked to the county mayor of Kirby County. I spoke with him last week, and then, of course, with Christmas, you know, it was sort of out, so I'm gonna try to get with him concerning that. But he said that there was some issues there, one of the programs, and y'all haven't received that yet as well, I'll need some more information from him, so if you'll just give the report to the entire department. Do y'all usually meet, like, once a month?
Once a month, they do, yeah, they send out a meeting invite, we have a monthly meeting.
Okay, does anyone else have anything?
I'm curious. Where's the training?
The training is gonna be, I live in Pelham, Pelham's hosting the training. I can confirm that with him, but I'm pretty sure that my invite said Pelham was hosting the training.
I'm curious about the size of the fire department, can you give an idea about how many firemen you have?
So, right now, off the top of my head, without going back and trying to look, I think we have eight active members.
And how's that working currently? I mean, what is usually the number you like to keep? I know Michelle was saying that, they were talking, she talked to him, was it before Christmas, Michelle, about him doing some type of recruitment plan?
Yeah, they've been actively trying to recruit on Facebook, word of mouth, things like that. Honestly, I would say you'd like to have at least double that number, just so you have a good rotation where you have coverage both day and night. With eight people, majority of your people work day shift, so therefore you have a shortage during the day, which is when the mutual aid comes into play, so, which we're lucky to have Tracy and Pelham and Swanee. So we do have a lot of coverage, but we do need more active members on our roster as well.
So that's something we need to focus on, is some form of recruitment to help you guys to get, as you're getting certified, to get certified firefighters.
Correct, because now would be a good time to get new people in with all the training coming online first of the year, you give them their sixteen hours prior to getting their sixty-four hours as state required.
Do you think maybe we could meet the next week or so and see if we can work on some type of plan to get that going? If y'all just, if you're doing that, or if Garen is, so we can work on maybe building those numbers somehow while they're gonna be trained?
I'll let him know, we'll set up a time.
Are any of these members certified?
Yes, so we have, if I'm not mistaken, we actually have four that are certified, and three of those are actually on full-time paid departments elsewhere, whether it be Manchester, Winchester, places like that, so.
Can you find out more instead that we can get that information, because at one time we had asked them for that certification right there?
I don't even have any idea.
It's me, I just turned mine back on.
Okay.
I had a question, how old do you have to be to join the volunteer fire department?
Eighteen years of age. Now, I think they're looking at like an explorer program to try to get people interested earlier on, but I don't think that's been found yet.
There's a sixteen-year-old in Swanee's department, I think.
Okay, I think that's a, I think that's our, I think that's a Montego with eighteen years of age, but we'd have to confirm that.
Get it on the chair.
I just turned it back off.
Well, does anyone else have anything? Well, we thank you, we appreciate what y'all do.
I thank so much, I'm good.
Police department? No, that's not it. I'm wondering if someone has a soundboard?
It's me, I just turned it back off.
Okay.
Well, quit.
I'll wait.
I'm just gonna go to the podium if I have anything to say.
That would be best, yeah. We did have Jack's report in there, workshop, did you bring that report with you?
Move the microphone on the podium, okay?
Jack's report. Do you mind reading it, Jack, just so we can have that where the record sits, and Nate may want to put it up just for a moment, too. He did provide it, and I guess.
I don't have a copy of that.
The theft, larceny, that's gonna be three, there's been three people arrested on theft charges. There's gonna be one aggravated assault, one burglary, two drug-related charges, six accidents, that's gonna be vehicles, ten citations, you know, we're kinda halfway through the cycle, so that's gonna go next tomorrow. The city fines is six hundred and seventy-two dollars, and the total will be six eighty-five eighty for the total of the citations.
So is everything going well with you guys? I know one of the things you were planning, and just briefly, we'll discuss it, and of course, that's for you to decide where you're cutting up cameras and how to put ours in places.
We discussed putting cameras, city hall, I already have four of those purchased, the boxes with that as well, for the, to hook it up to a monitor, or something, we just need to find someone to hook that up for us. I'd like to put two on the city garage as well.
And we said if you need to put some other ones up to get those, and we didn't have to know where, because y'all be watching, who do you normally get to put those up for you?
Well, that's the question. We really haven't had anyone two in the past to put them up. So I'm looking now, I know Michael Roar come by the police department today, and maybe give me a business card or something, and I may be, which I'll get three quotes.
The ones we have here at city hall, can't wait for that.
Well, I know that there's several people that can, and you can check with both of them, I think Mike does that as a service, the security service, and Keith can do it too with electrical, so if y'all wanna find out which one can do it, then which one y'all feel most comfortable, I mean, I'm sure it won't exceed a couple hundred dollars, that's what we talked about, even with the cameras, even if it's less. What did you say, the purchasing ones, that they did that?
Two hundred dollars for a box and everything.
But, I mean, Debbie said, what was the part that needed to be given out for the top purchase, you told us during the workshop? It was several, it was several thousand, and it's not gonna exceed that if you need them put up, just we can let us know, because there's no sense having them if they're not put up. And in particular, I meant.
Well, I mean, it would be an asset to the, it would've been an asset to the police department as well, and plus it would turn a crime.
Could you speak to the number of members we have on our police department, too, if we need more?
We have seven full-time officers right now, and we have a, he's an S R O, or not S R O, but he is a reserve, that's David Meeks, and he does the school zone.
And he's also a paid employee, right?
Right, right.
So, I mean, we could call him part-time, because I know one of the things you've mentioned, and I don't know how accurate it was, but the reserve program is probably not the best thing to do right now because of some of the liabilities, and tell me, correct me if I'm wrong.
The stipulations require more training, they're gonna go up to a hundred and twenty hours for a reserve.
That's why I was thinking it's a part-time employee, too, so, what was your second question?
Is that a full complement or officers?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Everything else going okay with you, Jack, this far?
It goes wrong way.
During Christmas, things went well, I know we had more activity with people coming?
Well, we had the issue in Nashville. And that shut AT&amp;T's out server service now, we're looking for a couple of days, and which they have a person in custody, as far as I know, and that's on our investigation.
Doran?
Um, I don't have anything, I just wonder, if AT&amp;T shut us down, are we strictly AT&amp;T, or we Verizon, how does that work?
We have Verizon, that's what I have.
Yeah, well, no, AT&amp;T services is the one that got shut down, so what, the reason the nine-one-one chair asked me to post that was if you had AT&amp;T services, Nate had it right, Nate, and for a couple of days he didn't know it. That's the reason why it posted, was if you got this service, talk it straight through it.
It wasn't the nine-one-one, it was your phone.
Yeah, it was your phone in service, and the service that was fed through there is what I understood, right?
No, I think the nine-one-one center was, I know in Franklin County, the nine-one-one center was down.
That's what I was.
Well, now, were we down? I didn't, I didn't think we were down, they told us we weren't totally down.
The nine-one-one was the issue here.
Yeah, there was an issue, but we would receive nine-one-one calls.
We could it, could not.
We could it, and that's why we were having to put the phone number, the primary phone number out, so that way they could make contact with dispatch if they had an emergency issue.
Well, I know that Don had called, spoke yesterday, when I called y'all, about them deploying a portable AT&amp;T, and he said they were, we had it back on, they were just having some glitches to work through, so, and by last night, I guess they had them all up. But, so we're strictly AT&amp;T then?
No, no, we're not strictly AT&amp;T, we have Verizon here in the city.
Well, no, I meant nine-one-one strictly AT&amp;T.
That I'm not aware of, I'm, I don't.
I don't think so. Well, and Don will be, he wants me to meet with him tomorrow, so when I meet with him tomorrow, we'll find out for sure.
I mean, if it ever happened again.
I know they had backups, I actually, I was reading about it today, so the bomb didn't shut everything down, the bomb shut the power down, the backup batteries and generators started and ran till the sprinkler system drowned the backup generators. That's what went down.
So it's actually something that couldn't have been prevented.
It was, yeah. Yeah, so that, they were, they were curious, people had been asking, why didn't, why didn't all the service go down as soon as the bomb went off? And the backup systems apparently worked, but then the backup systems got flooded by the sprinkler system, so.
But that was like the state one, that wasn't just here, you know, so it was an emergency, so it was, but I have to say, they were all on it, as far as nine-one-one, nine-one-one chair, you know, they were contacting us when the snow, so, you know, if there was any downtime, it was there, in a very short time. What did you say, because I know last night, was it N C, O C, is that what, that Don sent that text back and said it was backup? Yeah, so. Thank you, Jack, we appreciate y'all. Okay, then we'll go to utility manager. I think John's out there somewhere. Mr. Crander, you feeling better?
Yep, I'm better.
You come back and then your staff leaves, right? Because we got two that have got COVID, they're out with an extended stay, and. Yeah, but Keith tested negative. Or did you? Yeah, well, I know that they said, um, Keith's son, I mean, just said that he tested negative, but he's still sick, so.
Well, he told me he must be back tomorrow. See, that sounds impatient.
Sir?
Drone's out, Daryl's out, I said, yeah.
Did you? Are we gonna have to bring in a backup crew? We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to go to the unemployment office for utility workers.
Debbie says that Ricky called her today and said, Howard Brenda said, come out, but he might not come back, so I would want to go back.
Well, that's what they said, that's what, I talked to Keith about this weekend, he said that might be happening, so.
Who knows?
Council, they have to start filling its pods. One of the first time we did this, though.
I'll go second to dump. How is the dump, anyway?
Have we got the cardboard done?
It's trashy.
Boom, boom.
Uh, no, we don't have it yet, but they're gonna get it as quick as they can, I mean, they did tell us it might be, if y'all recall, because of Christmas and New Year's, it might be the next week, so. But now, as Jessica said, you can take cardboard this morning if it's broken down, correct?
Correct.
So, if they wanna drop down there until we get out.
You texted me, or talked to me the other day about the water tank report, I think it's Brad, that guy, Jeff texted me, said you'd have, try to have them in this week, written report and pictures, so, it was absolutely.
Is it a new indication about any of the problems?
Well, I know about Whitwell, I seen him, at the water plant, he didn't, he said run anything major, of course, I was often certain, he said if there anything major that he would call me while he's in fact, he nearly called me, so. I know we got one main problem down here in Midland, that's one pillars where the lab sets deteriorate, but I know that's more.
Well, if y'all didn't get it fixed, there's probably several issues, several years back that were supposed to be fixed.
There's nothing been fixed.
So there was like painting that was needing done, and there was repairs that needed to be done then.
And I think this year, I believe if they paint it, I believe it's gonna be great, that I put kind of the red paint, I believe.
You'll let us know, right? Which I think that Travis Wilson, that he had said, I know he talked to me and he talked to you, that he was gonna go and meet with you as soon as he could, he could not be here tonight because his wife had a surgery.
Yeah, he sent me an email, said he would try to, depending on how hard it puts her to win, so.
And so, but he's gonna meet with you about the software to make sure and see what that, and also the needs as far as the water and sewer, because on January the fifth, we plan on having a public hearing, which will be at five forty-five. It'll be for the C V B G grant, but you have to have that, just apply, to apply for it, not saying a specific project, but for infrastructure.
I also talked to, I think I mentioned you out here, where the truck plant was going, we may have some problems out there.
Well, if it goes, we didn't know it was going to, you know what I'm saying, there's the judges gotta determine, there's the attorneys, you know, January the fifteenth is when they'll decide what's happening, then we'll go from there, so right now. But I know that y'all did, so regardless, we have some issues with some sewer lines out there that need to be looked at in different areas with the, you know, the infrastructure, so.
And I guess, I reckon everything else going pretty good, so, you know, if you're on your end, Stephen and them, they're working on the vehiculars, and then go cover down the plant.
Well, have you heard from Jerome and Derek on how they're doing?
Today, Drone said he gonna try to come back, but he sure runs out, he was good to me.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying how they're doing, and have you heard from Derek?
I talked to him, I see Friday, I think, he said he'd do better.
You ever tell him that?
They've been, yeah, they were all tested.
And they're positive?
They were when they took off, you know, they'll be there fourteen days.
Okay, I saw it, so does the city house, I know it's recommended by CDC to be off for fourteen days, but it's also up to the employer whether they make them stay off for fourteen days, so, what is our policy?
Our policy is they're off for fourteen days if they have it, because that's what we got from the attorney.
Do they have to have a negative test in order to come back?
No, because they say that you can test up to three months, but they said the fourteen day, if you're not the symptoms, or if you don't have a fever, you know, the fourteen days you have to stay off if you've been tested, is what we've been telling you. Yeah, but you can still. It's another day that you can still test, you can't test. But that's, we actually.
But they can be fourteen days with no symptoms?
Yeah, we got.
Was the mic on for that? At the sewer plant, I guess it was a water plant.
Robbing quarantine down there?
Well, I mean, you've probably been quarantined out there more times than we've been, so, um, does, um, we can issue it again, I think one of our first meetings, Doran, we did have what the insurance company said, we had it in one of the packets, but we could get another copy of it, because that's what the insurance company recommends that we do.
Yeah, not that it's mandated, but it's just a recommendation, it's up to the employer.
Friday, me and Keith went out, this gentleman called me up here where these tiny houses are, here. Called me about a week, and I called Keith, he said it was main water, so I called Keith, and he come by, looked at it, and come pick me up. We went back up there, of course, they install all the water lines, they don't consider they install. The service lines, they used to put the service lines together, they used to call these gator grips, that fly in the canvas. Well, Daryl went up there week four last, I think it was, fixing one, and that's what me and Keith did, but we're not going back to fixing more.
Was that the agreement, because that would happen before us, right, Deb, you made a little bit more?
The main water line is our problem.
Right.
These gator grips are not supposed to be put on the ground, they put them on the ground in the service line, probably I'd say in places before the meter, connected meter. Well, I don't see where it's up to us to have to repair them.
Is that on the problem? See, I don't know.
But if the service line went to the houses.
Yeah, then that's not ours, because inside, inside that development belongs to them, correct?
Except the main lines, anything got to see where our equity here becomes us.
Yes.
But I don't see what we need to service the service lines, I don't see what we need to do now.
Now, I don't know why we would, we need to go back on evidence.
Out in town, we do it.
Yeah.
But we do it from the meter to the main line, that's ours.
Right.
From the meter to the house is individuals.
Yes.
But they put these gator grips, I don't know for all, in the lines, instead of mooning it, or using roll pack, they use these gator grips, and they don't last any longer.
What did our contract call for in terms of specs, if we were gonna take over their line, did we specify we're gonna take over the main lines?
See, we shouldn't be doing this according to time, this is not even part of our agreement.
So, in.
I hadn't talked to, what's his name, Debbie, Chip? I hadn't talked to Chip yet, and I'm going tomorrow to see if I can catch him and talk to him about it.
So our contract doesn't say anything about service lines even to the meter?
Well, it may, I hadn't read it, it may, but see, a lot of that went through here and didn't, didn't come to me.
So there wasn't an inspection process?
Not really.
We should look at that, because there should have been an opportunity for you to inspect, and if you didn't get to inspect, then, then we shouldn't have to deal with it.
Well, we'll look at the contract, we'll pull it out.
I mean, I know the main line would be out of problem, but as far as the service lines, if, before the meter's gonna save, if they got them gator grips in there, I don't see where it's our problem, it'll be their problem. This makes us see there was two right next to the line that was broke, there was two right there and another line that was laying to get, there was three right there in one place.
So they're having multiple lines?
Well, they have one leak, but, and then they had another one, I think it was week four, it was when I was off, they had one up there.
But these are before the meter leaks, so we're paying for them.
These was after, these was after, the one we fit was after.
Well, why would you, why would you have even went, I mean, why didn't, why didn't we even go?
Called, when he called me, he said it was a main line.
Oh, so when you got there, you saw what it was. So he didn't even know, see, oh, you need to get with the director and talk to him, and we need to get the contract and look at that and see what.
Well, there's a maintenance man, Tim Campbell, or maintenance man, and he thought it was main line, so, you know, I called Keith, and I was trying to get things lined up in case it was main. Keith come by and said, what, we went back up there, well, that, we had fixed it this time. I just don't see where it's our place.
So is each house on its own meter?
Yeah.
Okay. So the leak would've shown up in the meter, then?
Oh, yeah, 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 it showed up, I mean, you know, see, you got to pay for the water.
That's important.
Yeah, and the thing is, too, we don't, we don't service them, so we just need to make sure they know that.
Well, I just wanted to let y'all in case someone called y'all, you'd be the heads up on.
Could we get the contract in?
Uh, I know where, I know, we'll go back to October of two thousand nineteen. We'll see if we can find something on it, Nate.
'Cause if it's, if there was no contract, I'd say none of it's ours, and we gotta get a contract.
Technically.
I mean, I'm not trying to be ugly.
Well, yeah, I agree with you, we'll see if we can find one in that timeframe, I think it was October two thousand eighteen is when I saw the m- mention of it. And we'll see what we can find out tomorrow, the next day or two we'll explore. And if there's not one, Chip would have one, if you talk to Chip, ask Chip if he has one.
I'm gonna try to see.
If you can see him, if you can't, I can get his number and I'll call him and I'll see if we have a contract.
I'll have that number, I'll do it.
Well, but I'd like to get a copy of that contract, if we can't, if we don't have a hands on it, that, that if there isn't one, that he can get it to us, he will.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to be ugly, but I think if there's not a contract, not ours, not even the main line's ours, 'cause we would have no jurisdiction over it.
Someone has to hear it, or just break something, or do it longer.
Well, we ought to probably get a contract, or we can put a new meter in.
Hey, we'll work with them to get it done, maybe there is a contract, we don't know that yet. Anybody got anyone else who they think we're done? Okay. Nate? Okay, all right, thank you, John, we'll see you tomorrow. Okay, is Earl here tonight?
I don't see him or not.
He's been, I didn't see him, so he may not be here, but I don't think he has anything anyway till next week. He does, and is, uh, Mr. Anderson out there still? You don't care to come in, sir? This is Anderson Detailing, and it was talked about a while back, Earl had approved it, he just said that, uh, we have one. So, you have one, all right, that, this is Mr. Anderson, and he has Anderson Detailing in Montego, it is in the city limits, but it's just a mobile top business. So, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Anderson?
I do not.
When are you opening?
Um, well, I got a temporary permit about three weeks ago.
So, he's already doing it?
Very good.
And he does a good job.
They say he does an excellent job, whenever we get a chance to see, you know, we've got some of these cleaning up, too, but does Nate, do you have anything for Mr. Anderson? Thank you very much, and you have approval for your, uh, business, and we hope you do well, so, thank you. Okay, then we have Karen with, you wanna come up and, I think we've got some stuff in our packet. Oh, okay, we asked her to come back with some different processing. This is one, Nate, I'm just gonna have it, Jenny had it back, and then, we need to open it. Here's another one, is these purchased straight out, Karen?
Uh, the ones that are.
Like three thousand and?
Yes, those are purchased straight out, but they have, I think it says there's a maintenance plan on there, too.
Okay, 'cause.
And you have to have the, more than you have to pay.
And then you had one for nine hundred and one's for?
I think all of them you have to pay per copy, that covers your, uh, maintenance and all that.
But this one.
The nine hundred dollar one is a just flat out purchase, then you have a maintenance, per month of thirty-three dollars and something, which covers your toner and any problem that you have.
And that's what you usually, you said you were paying and, and covering with charges?
Yeah, that's what I was paying for, there's another used one that's fourteen ninety-five, I think. And it has, I don't remember what it says.
Well, you got one, and we'll pass those down, and I'll send you the other ones, but it looks like they're just all different across the board.
You said this one was used. Except for one, one guy who said he didn't have any used ones whatsoever, and he didn't recommend one.
This one's, uh, nine hundred.
So, these are unused machines?
No, the Kia Sarah is new, and I think the other two that are like three thousand, four thousand dollars, three, thirty-seven hundred and all, I think those are new too, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, I understand he uses nine hundred dollar one and the fourteen ninety-five.
But it comes, you can get your maintenance plan with it, and I'm looking, it says it does black and white copies, it does scanning, faxing options, it's a twelve hundred E P I, standard, uh, two hundred gigabyte for clean storage, it does deal eleven by seventeens, it goes up to ninety weight paper, so it automatically feeds a hundred, you know, sheets at a time, as far as in your feeder. So, this is what you were basically asking for whenever you were talking about purchasing one one and, and that.
Yeah, that's the one I had started with.
And I mean, but for what you're using over there, and for people coming in, does this sufficient?
It should be sufficient.
'Cause I know, and I know we didn't have anything budget, we had mentioned to Karen splitting the cost with it, because, you know, there'd be something would happen, add to it, so.
And so that, I just saw the one, it's forty-three hundred.
Here, I'm gonna have to do two others. Got two others there.
Yeah, that forty quarter ninety-five, I think, that's the most expensive one, of course, it's the best one, too, but, uh, it's pretty expensive. And it's, it's a new one.
So, this one's like forty-four ninety-five, this one's nine hundred.
Yeah, it's, it's used, and the Kia Sarah is brand spanking new.
Well, but the thing that, sometimes, and I'm just going about, some of the banks have said recently, they're happier with their older ones, if they're maintained, 'cause if you get a maintenance contract with it, they're usually fixed for what they need.
Yeah, all of them probably with a maintenance, you know, with a per month payment thing, that you have to pay for copies, which covers your maintenance.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, you know, Nate, do you need to?
Uh, just, so that fifteen hundred you paid last time, the sixty months ago, was that a new one or a used?
Yeah, it was used.
It was used at the time, okay, so you got six years out of it.
In fact, one of the guys told me you got five years out of a used one, I said, yes, we did, five and a half.
Do you know about how many copies you run a month, I mean, just, I'm just.
So, I average about a hundred dollars a month, which is, oh, that ten cents copy.
And, and that's.
Actually, I, I average a hundred dollars a month.
Thirty-four hundred dollar one, new or used?
I think it's new. It's from Aces, I think, yeah, that was the one from Aces.
Yeah.
This is the one she had talked about, like she said she got five years of the user before, this is the one she presented, we just asked her to come back with maintenance contracts and see what they were, so, like, if we had mentioned to, if, what if we wanted to pay versus whatever they're going to contribute to it, so.
Yeah, we can talk about lease proof.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of those are, yeah, the, the more immediate ones are leased. And then the other ones are, just you buy them and then you pay a, a per copy fee every month, and that covers your toner and your, then fixing it and every night.
What are you charged for color? I was just noticing.
Twenty-five cents per up, depending how much color there is.
Isn't this nonsense for page when it goes over, it's seventy-five cents per, per color, or is it seven point two five? Is this, uh, what I'm seeing, this?
Uh, that was very confusing to make some of those.
I mean, I know if you read checks and now, but they.
What I was paying before was a penny a copy, uh, black and white, and ten cents a copy for color. But we, by, we charged by the page, about a quarter of the page, twenty-five cents, thirty dollars for a full page, to cover paper, too, so.
Well, yeah, you have to.
You gotta have paper.
So, if you had a preference, which one would you want?
I would want the kid's, well, it's a very expensive one.
And how, how much can you pay on that?
I can't, I can't pay that, uh, they're not gonna, they're gonna do.
That's what I was telling, it's, it's not budgeted at all, that's what we said during the workshop, that we talked about it, but if we asked her if she could pay a portion, and we could pay the rest of it, and I think she said, yeah, but.
Yeah, I, definitely I have to pay that, I, you know, the monthly fee that they charge, we will, I'll definitely pay that, for sure.
What could you pay on the nine hundred dollars if you paid it, 'cause we don't have anything budgeted for a copy, you know, I'm just asking.
What would you need me to pay?
When I'm just, well.
Whatever, whatever I'm gonna take away from something else.
Eight hundred seventy-five dollars.
No, I mean, could you do like, I mean, I'm just gonna throw a number, could, you know, half, could you do four hundred dollars, you know what I'm saying, I don't know, I'm just, I'm trying to.
You could do four hundred dollars.
You could do four hundred, I mean.
You could do the maintenance plan.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we, we do, I mean, I'm just putting out there, 'cause we asked this question, so somebody else asked a question, uh, Nate, it's your time.
Well, I was curious to know whether the lease would get you a newer copier for a longer period for nominal cost over the maintenance agreement, but it doesn't, I, I was just scanning it.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like that.
You still get, you still get charged the maintenance agreements regardless of whether you lease or purchase.
Regardless.
And so, in fact, the last one was used, makes it seem like there's some longevity there, so is there any value in the one that you've got, like, are they gonna trade it in?
Yeah, that's something that we probably push it out before this.
Yeah, I think you have to probably.
It has no value.
It has no value.
Okay, so again, I'm just thinking about sort of.
The company doesn't even make parts for that machine anymore.
Well, I'm just thinking about how the, how the dollars and cents run out, you know, if you, you buy a new one, you might be able to sell it at the end versus buying a used one, it's, it's zero.
Yeah, they said they couldn't do anything, well, that's when others have been trashed.
Which makes sense.
And they will do that, they'll bring in a new one and take that one out and trash it. The, the company will, 'cause they're the ones that sold it to us.
She said they could pay four hundred, and the maintenance contract, monthly maintenance fee, if we can pay the five hundred.
It certainly sounds like if we can get a used one for nine hundred dollars, that we would hope we'd get another five years of service life out of it, that seems like the way to go.
The one that I'm using is driving me crazy. Turn it on, turn it off, I bet I did it twenty-five times today, just trying to get, just those copies right there, took me about twenty minutes.
Well, if we could do five hundred, I'm just picking a number up there, then that would, you said you could do the four.
Yeah, it would really help, yeah.
And the maintenance council, that would show.
I think in the service that you offer that we need to continue, we'll find it somewhere. I just don't want you to get the most expensive, but I don't want you to get wasted, you know, you know, if we're gonna buy.
Yeah. I feel like I've always, that we, the dealer company did good with me the last time, and they're always Johnny on the spot, and I'm happy with their, all right.
You're happy to get nine hundred dollars.
I've, yes, they seem, they're really good, I hate to spend more and not have as good a service or.
I know, I know I'm, I'm new to this, but I guess the question that I wanna ask, and, and maybe it's not really how it's done, but what budget line is it coming out of?
Well, you got a budget in front of you, so you can look at supplies, or you can look somewhere, and we can amend those, you've got a budget with it, so you can pull that out of, um, general supplies, right there, I mean.
It's a durable good.
I'm trying to take down the stakes, man.
Could you even do that?
Bundle up.
Bundle up, we're gonna do it.
Actually, we're not using much, he heard anything over there, right, Nate?
Cut off a lot.
It's the same here, they're gone.
Yeah, cut off a lot of them. I have these things.
Thousand dollars in those supplies. But we've only got six there, somebody else will.
But, so this is a good point, if, if we haven't been running the heat, because we haven't been running senior programs, are we gonna?
It's been running, but not like we, with the.
You have a thousand, uh, you have a thousand and fifty dollars in your account, Nate, the council.
Yeah.
And you can take the five hundred there, or take the old equipment out of there, so, uh, is it accountable?
Well.
Y'all wanna make the motions of?
Do we have to decide tonight where we're gonna get the money, or can't we have a little time to look, and just, we'll just say that we'll pay the five hundred dollars toward it, the buying, the purchase?
He's right about allocating it out of an area, if you go ahead and bill a lot of them, that way can deduct and keep up with the budget, so it'd be better if we can go ahead and pull it out of the line item. I mean, identify.
Is, is, is the next, can you, can you suffer through it for thirty days, and you can just have it on the agenda to make a motion to allocate the funds at the next meeting, or do we need to do this tonight to save you?
She needs it tonight with things shut down.
I've already been dealing with it for, uh, three weeks, I'm turning down it, I'm just to make one copy.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to do it, can we just at the next meeting, so at the next workshop, let's identify what budget line it's gonna come out of, and at the next meeting, we just declare what it's coming out of, that way we can get into the process, 'cause I feel like.
I'd prefer that.
Well, yeah, and that's fine, but you went and pulled out a line item, and usually it's the best way to do it, but I'm getting it away, I mean, that's your call.
If we can.
You have a line item to be able to pay for it.
Yeah, she does.
So, she needs a line item now.
So, well, here's what, Deb, so, so usually the council doesn't use supplies, 'cause it either comes out of general price.
I don't know how that would be with it, that they might not with it.
So, you could take it out now, I mean, the question is.
And that's remaining until June.
Yes.
So, it's only six months that we have to, to use it.
So, I have to go ahead and do it tonight.
Well, we could, that's what we're saying, you can, if you're gonna have something.
We just know where it comes out of.
Did you see page four, Nate?
Um.
It's on page four. It's ten dash four, one, 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 zero, dash, three, hundred.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Thousand fifty dollars, twenty-seven cents, she said it could come out of that. Because that's never used anywhere, was.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
She said rarely is that used anywhere.
Which, which account?
The council.
The council supplies.
Supplies.
Might as well.
And then it'll renew in July.
So, do y'all want to make a motion?
I'd like to move that we use, uh, money from the council supply line item, in the amount of five hundred dollars, to pay part of the cost of the new printer for the library. The library will pay the other four hundred dollars and maintain the maintenance cost every month.
With the copier, I'm just, flag protection for the.
And I'll say.
Okay, so get a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Try calling tomorrow, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, can you, can we keep this one, prior record, so we can call them tonight, thank you. Excellent.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
That's it, you can call them tonight if you can get through.
Uh, I did talk to Jessica tonight, um, Jessica, wait, we were talking about the ball program and stuff, she said with COVID, said last year, Marion County won on the baseball. And so, we don't know what's going on, so we'll be working, I have talked with Mayor Jackson, I'm also taking, talking with Mayor Brady, well, Mayor Brady was last week, I've talked to Mayor Jackson a couple of times, but with the, um, spike in COVID right now, we really don't know what's going on with some of that stuff. I would like to mention this to you guys, if, um, you don't mind, I know we've had some comments, I think there was around, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, around two hundred and sixty maybe comments on the lots. And the majority of them are correct, now we're positive, I mean, you know, we have some negatives, but, uh, some people have been in quarantine, so they asked if we could leave them up, which we usually leave them up like the first week. But I was, I was driving through today thinking, you know, they, there is a certain part of pleasant when people drop their town, if we were to take the characters up, say, maybe, maybe the end of next week, and leave the light, lights out, and the park lights out until, say, you know, closer to the end of the month, where people can get out and enjoy things with COVID, they can't do a lot, take pictures, you know, it'll be taking all the Christmas characters, you know, and talking, but just leaving the lights out, does anybody have a?
I think that's wonderful.
An issue with us telling the guys to do that, and I mean, even if you wanted to go walking, riding, Jack, you said a problem with that, I know that people were, you know, taking pictures in the park, you know, I mean, they, just for a walk, because with all that's going on? Does anyone?
I'm not the idea, because I think people are using the park later, you see people up there later, they're getting so many lights.
And a lot of people are now coming to like remote areas to like stay at the end or stay somewhere else, and they're actually walking down there, and they have comedy done, you know, they even come from Swanee to look out.
Yeah.
So, if that's all right, maybe next week, at the end of the week, they'll pull up the, the Christmas characters, but we'll leave the lights out, and even, even the greenery and the boas, I mean, for right now, because it just, it's just pleasant. If that's all right with you all, then we can take them down by the end of the month, hopefully it'll make us some more, give us some more tourist money.
Good, give us time to decorate for Valentine's Day.
I'm thinking July the fourth, just, hey, Red, it's still works, they stay together, anyway, but, uh, so that was, those two, all right, um, oh, dang, at the bottom, Nate, do you have that ordinance that you can pull up? Okay, this is reading of ordinance zero, one, two, one, and it's planning commission members, so.
Particularly.
Well, I'm probably going to read this, okay?
You aren't gonna?
Let's see if I can do it.
An ordinance, this is zero, one, twenty-one, an ordinance of the Town of Montego to authorize additional members to the Town of Montego Planishable Planning Commission as authorized by T C A thirteen dash four, one, zero, one, and to set terms for the members of the planning, planning commission. As we found out, according to our charter, we needed to make this provision to increase the numbers of the planning commission to be legal, whereas in pursuit of T C A code thirteen dash four, one, zero, one, the members of the planning commission may as be, may as be determined by the Board of Mayor and Alderman, be constituted as few as five members and as many as ten members. And whereas currently is the planning commission is constituted by five members who serve staggering terms, and whereas the Board of Mayor and Alderman has determined that two additional members. and whereas the board and mayor and alderman has determined that two additional members will be provided to the planning commission, which will broaden the capacity, the experience and expertise. Now, therefore, be it ordained as the following. Section one, section fourteen, one, zero, one of the municipal code has hereby repeal and replace the following code. Fourteen dash one, zero, one, creation and membership. Proceeding in provisions of Tennessee Code annotated thirteen dash four, one, zero, one, there's hereby created a municipal planning commission. Herein after, referring to as a planning commission, the planning commission shall consist of seven members. Two of these shall be the mayor or a person designated by the mayor in the mayor's place, another member of the board of the mayor and aldermen selected by the board of the mayor and aldermen, and the other three, other three, five members, is this five members shall be appointed by the mayor. All members of the planning commission shall, shall serve as such without compensation and according to TCA code thirteen dash four, one, zero, one, part eight, requiring staggering terms for the appointed members, for the terms of the five, five appointed members shall be one member for five years, five members, five-year member terms, and one member for four, four term, four years' terms, one member for, for one, three, three for one-year term, one member for two-year terms, and one member for one-year term, the year terms. Therefore, the terms that are appointed by the members shall be for five years as initially appointments expire. Then it says section two, upon the effective date of this ordinance, the current position of the planning commission is declared, are declared back at subject to reappointment as provided herein section three. This ordinance shall be effective immediately upon publication after the final passage of public welfare requiring it. So, that's the tiny terms as we all know. But, uh, this would be passing, we've had to find out recently that we had seven members, which, um, was incorrect, so we asked two of us to step down for the, but we're passing this, so we can go back to up to, what says ten, but to the seven-member board. The other, of course, that will, and will need to, uh, approve the reading of ordinance zero, one, dash, twenty-one for the first reading, we'll have to do this twice. Of course, we do have it scheduled again to do, um, January the eighteenth. Right, so another meeting scheduled for January the eighteenth. So do we hear any discussion for ordinance zero, one, twenty-one? Because we'll have to do it in two different parts. I would, well, and the second part of this is that the appointment of the board member, which it was, of course, I'd asked Dorian if she would serve on the, the planning commission, because this had been done in the past, so that was in there. That will be appointed by this board instead of by the mayor, and the rest of them will be appointed by the mayor. So, that's the two issues we're dealing with this ordinance. Nate?
I like it.
Dorian?
Have no problem.
Jessica?
Agree.
Yeah, we'll have to, the first reading.
Okay. Um, I'd like to know that we've concluded the first reading of ordinance number zero, one, dash, twenty-one, and that the second reading will be on January the eighteenth.
I'll second that.
All in favor? So that one's that. Um, Leslie, we can get your copy of this if you'd like.
That would be lovely.
Okay, so we'll get your copy of it. Okay, because she had asked Starly, there's no reason, I just want to. Alright. Sorry, until the microphone's working, I wouldn't give these microphones back anyhow. Okay, appointment, um, that's, well, the second thing we need to do now that was in the ordinance is appoint, um, the council member to the planning commission board to serve. So, uh, I'd asked, I had talked to Dorian, um, formally about doing that, if, um, I'm just talking right now, of course, if someone else, um.
I'm not sure of the steps, can we recommend an appointment without approving the ordinance? Or does it come after the ordinance is approved?
It says, it says, because there's only five members, what we're doing is making that board legal.
I see.
Because you still have that, still appointment, regardless if there's five or seven, has to be appointed. The number was in question.
I understand.
And then we're just making sure she's appointed correctly, according to the attorney.
I understand.
So.
Sounds like somebody needs to nominate the ring.
That's what it sounds like to me, it's gonna be-
Did I just do that?
Did you just do that?
I really didn't think it was right that I called my husband, so.
And I can't nominate her, so, you know, I have to, with the two of y'all, so.
I'll nominate Marie.
Okay, uh, do we have a second, um, her nomination to the planning commission more?
We have the second down.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the, uh, third, which these have been ran, Deb, I'm gonna clarify this, right? These have already, notices are being ran? Okay, so. As of tomorrow, that will be, all the other notices are being run, correct? Okay, and we probably need to go ahead and- Okay, well, she's got the instructions to help run those legally, from my attorney after we met with them, and that's, um, sound my lead. But, uh, it'll be a special commenting on January the eighteenth for the second reading of, of zero, one, twenty-one, first reading of ordinance zero, two, dash, twenty-one, and the first reading of ordinance zero, three, dash, twenty-one. Let me clarify here, uh, at our workshop last week, uh, Nate had mentioned he wanted to add a provision, was it to, uh, zero, two, dash, twenty, twenty-one, Nate?
So, one of those is the zoning code and one of those is the zoning map.
Hold on, I've got them here, let's see which. It wasn't, wait a minute, it was the third one, is the one it was, it wasn't zero, two, because that's the map.
Zero, three, two, one.
Yeah, it was zero, three, two, one, in which that we would have the provision that signage would, must be placed on the property if it's rezoned, would- He is, he sent a, he sent me an email today last week when you sent that to me, uh, Nate, after we discussed it. I did send it on to the attorney, he has asked, uh, Garrett Haynes to make that change before it goes to the planning commission on January the fifth, and then before it comes to us, it would have a provision in which we discussed at the workshop, that would be the signage, and I'm paraphrasing here, and you're welcome to interject any time, that the signage would be put up on the property by the person requesting the rezoning. It must stay there within whatever the required amount of time is, fifteen days, I think, fourteen days, I mean. And also that there would be a picture taken of that, that the signage is put up, as well as we would do courtesy letters. Courtesy letters, not required letters to the property owners around, surrounding that. Is that the provisions that we did put in there?
Yeah, I, I thought we were gonna make some suggestions for the planning commission and they were gonna then turn around and give us back the-
They are, but what I'm saying, I'm just saying we did it for those changes to be made to the ordinance before it went to the planning commission.
Yep.
And then in return, they will make recommendations to us, and then on the eighteenth, we'll be able to address those.
Yep, and so what we're doing is trying to go beyond what the law requires to make sure that neighbors have notification when there's a zoning change being proposed. So there, the last zoning ordinance had proposed mandatory letters to all landowners within three hundred feet. Our attorney recommended against that, um, for a couple of different reasons. Um, I was not satisfied that we should do nothing, so I checked into it and, um, other towns in Tennessee, many of them, uh, require signage to be placed on the property that is up for rezoning, that talks about what the current zoning is and what the proposed zoning is, and lets people know when the meetings are going to occur, so that anybody who drives by there, who has an interest in the property, should reasonably know that there is a zoning change being contemplated. So I ask for these to be considered by the planning commission, so that we have some way to make sure that we're letting people know, so that we don't have this same thing happen again that we're currently dealing with.
But it does need state courtesy letters.
Yeah, they'll need courtesy letters, that's what we discussed in having those changes. So what I did immediately was send that to Garrett Haynes and her attorney, and the attorney did respond that he and Garrett will get us back to before January the fifth for the planning commission to review at the next meeting, which will be at six o'clock. And that is the Tuesday, uh, next Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so, does anyone have any other questions concerning? And the other ordinance is, um, zero, two, two, one, which we had just mentioned, and that is another one for them to review, uh, based upon the recommendation of the attorney. Clarifying that we have now, and I guess I will name it the dead zone, right? We have a bull's eye on us, on the one piece of property that now is before the court system that we're not involved with, but that we would, of course, create an ordinance in which that we would go back to the two thousand sixteen map, and I'm paraphrasing that ordinance again, because it will not be dealt with until, uh, after the fifth. It'll come back before it's, before it's on the eighteenth.
Well, the planning commission on their meeting on the fifth is, is hopefully going to recommend to us ordinance two, dash, twenty-one and ordinance three, dash, twenty-one.
And so, and there is also the ordinance that was created, did that get back to us, is, uh, about that the dead zone would be handled differently?
So, that'll, that'll be in the map, that'll be in the map.
Okay, but I know that the attorney was supposed to give us that ordinance for the planning commission, if they're gonna recommend, recommend it to us. And because that is in our litigations, so that's the reason we're handling that one situation different. He did recommend we do that. I know that sounds a little complicated, but we all know it's, you know, is a bit right now.
Well, I think, so we're gonna go back to the map from two thousand sixteen, with the exception of that one parcel that was formerly R three in the two thousand sixteen map, but was changed to C three in the two thousand eighteen map that is the subject of litigation.
Correct, I mean-
We're not doing anything with that parcel, we're letting the judge decide on that parcel. But everything else is going back to two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, and that'll be done, according to, even today, uh, I did find out that all cases are supposed in the, the, um, is it, not TML, Tony, the, the attorney representing us with their insurance company did send, oh, it is TML? Because we've got two different insurance companies. But he did say today that, um, cases that will be heard will be done through some type of virtual social media, and he's not sure if the judge has requested for the same date, but they'll let us know. We're just sort of with the COVID situation because of the, um, the executive order seventy-one that the governor knows. So, we'll go from there.
You're talking about the January fifteenth?
Yeah, but they're gonna have to do it virtual in some meetings, some of these, and some of these go-to meetings, I'm not sure, but they, they have to make requests and be able to be heard that way. But as far as they know, they're still preparing to get, to be heard on the fifteenth. When we're talking about that, I will mention, uh, this afternoon, we received two letters on neighboring, neighbors in standing. Well, there was two of it, who's this one from?
The one on the twenty-second as well.
Okay, well, one came on the twenty-second from a Mr. Jim Waller, and it's concerning the situation of the, um, uh, well, I guess we're calling it the dead zone right now, because we're not addressing the property over here. And there's another one that came.
Mr. Waller's doing North Left Drive.
Yeah, okay, well, okay, well, there is two different ones. It's this North Left Drive, well, let's go to the one on, let's go to the one on the twenty-second that's signed by neighbors in standing. I'm just going to send this to the attorney, since we have a attorney now representing that, because I don't know that we can address it, but he can. I mean, um, I just saw it this afternoon when I got back, so that's, he's handling this situation, so we'll send him a copy in the morning. Okay, now, Mr. Waller's, I'm not seeing it as either, this came on the twenty-eighth. Yeah, so I would almost go better if we had a chance to look at it, you know, and then we can deal with that.
Well, he's, he's talking about a property that he has brought up on multiple occasions, and others have brought up on multiple occasions, years, it's gone on for years. And when we had an ordinance officer, supposedly he was in conversation with them, I, I think we, we need to get some information.
Jack, can you look at this, please, because I think this falls under probably a nuisance instead of, um, can I give this to you if you look at and you check on it for me, and if it's what I think it is, if the burning and the other stuff, that falls under the nuisance, not the code? Well, she's got an extra copy, so will you look this in?
Have you been involved in this, Jack, at all?
Where is this at? I don't see it.
Billy, Billy Thomas's mom's old place.
Didn't they sell that property?
Across the-
Across the room.
So whose is that?
It's the same person, this person across the street bought it, I think.
It says three ninety-six North Left Circle, is that-
Is this Alexander's, it's not, it's not?
I don't know where it's at, see, I haven't looked at it, can you look at it? Here's probably what we need to do, since I, I mean, you may have said it's been brought up before, Nate, I'm not sure. I mean, I've heard a lot of discussion, but can you look at this and we can look if it is a nuisance, if it's something, how we need to handle it? Because I, I didn't see this till today, uh, I don't know, if we can address it, I'm assuming we shouldn't, but I'm not even sure.
Uh, I have addressed this, uh, hey, you guys have been working on it. Uh, because it's, it's way better than what it was, uh, there were several junk cars in there, and, you know, I told him that if he didn't make an effort, that he would be cited. And he, he is making an effort.
Well, can you go back and check and see if he's continuing to pursue that?
Yeah, he is, because he's, he, he, he just got rid of a junk car probably two weeks ago.
So can we get a picture for the next meeting that we have, so we're thinking that we can actually show that he's making progress? You know, we're not ignoring it, because apparently it's been going on for quite some time.
I think as long as he makes a report, so.
I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know how you want to have it, I know you're saying what it is, I'm getting a report too, but just in case we could get it, some of these letters, so either way, if you'll just report by the next meeting on what's going on.
Are you guys picking up as far as codes enforcement, where John left it off?
And that's the only thing that's, that's been given to you, right, is this?
I guess, and other residents on Fourth Street, we've been doing with as well.
Are they making progress?
They are.
And he can, probably we might want to do on a report to start, if y'all are doing it now, let's add that to your report, so at least we have a progress report and let people know. If you don't mind, I mean, I think that'd be good too, if y'all are picking it up, and so.
Are you guys just, um, are you riding around and saying, hey, we need to put this one on the list? Or are you going by recommendations, what are we doing?
Uh, well, I mean, if, if we ride around and see the residents, uh, you know, referring violation, then we'll, we'll pull in and say, hey, you know, you need to try to get this corrected, uh, because I, I know some people, you know, they're, they're on harder times right now, and, you know, we, we try to be courteous and respectful. And, uh, you know, sometimes that works and sometimes it doesn't, and sometimes we have to issue a citation and let it carry on. Uh, so, and then let, let the judge pick them out, and if they can, then it starts to correct fines over time.
You know, I've always thought you can be poor, but you can be clean before, you know?
And it's true, I mean, you know, and things do happen, you know? But, uh, if you're the ones, if you don't mind, if y'all will add that to your report, and then we can just report on this and the other ones at the next meeting, if that's okay with y'all?
Yes, he does, I'm just reading these letters, he does talk about two different properties.
That's what I was thinking.
So-
There's actually one above that, and as far as I know, there was a letter issued from the attorney, that's been probably four, four or five months back.
That's on three ninety-six North Cross?
Yes.
On the right-hand side as you're going out?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, the attorney sent the letter, that would have been-
Well, that would have been bought.
But somebody bought the property, so.
Yeah, and they've actually moved it. Yeah.
To get them out to Deboe Street. This is what the Deboe Center has asked for.
But I thought you said we were correct that the road doesn't go that far. That according to the deed. What were you telling me today?
So the deed goes to Overton Street, so let's see, where's my arrow? The Deboe Center owns to here.
Right.
This is the town street.
Correct.
And so the idea would be to, we own the town, so we can't close it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but we would have to go through the process of closing that street because at one time it was in question how far Deboe's. Um, and they only own, I think it's to their, into their, their fence or gate or.
It's, the, the deed calls for a, a line roughly parallel with Overton Street, which is here.
Is that where, um, John? Okay, I got you, I didn't know that was Overton Street. Okay, so it's across, so what we would have to do is we would, and plug in some button or something, we would dip on it to talk to it. As it, but if we went this route, then we as the town would have to, donate the rest of this property to property owners, right, or to the Mountain Go, to the Mountain Go.
No, so we own it. We own it. The Mountain Go Trail Alliance already owns this property, so we would donate this property to the landowner.
But not the road.
The town already owns the road, so nothing would change.
I thought you were still wanting to close the road.
We want to turn it into the trail. But the trail would still be a town of Monegoel asset, so.
But it wouldn't no longer be a street, it would be a trail.
So, yeah.
We'd have to designate it as, as they would, we would have to put a red list, there's a process to take the red out as well.
We pull it off. Yeah.
So we'd have to do that protocol so we later, that doesn't come back and get us.
Yes.
But if we gave that to the Mountain Go Trail to continue it, would the maintenance and that keep be the Mountain Go's? Or be the town? I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, so we would, the, the way we have been building trail for all the municipalities and the way we'd like to do it here is that we build the trail and it becomes an asset for the town of Monegoel. And so we'll, this would go under the maintenance agreement that we're working, be the same thing, be part of the same maintenance agreement.
Well, we know we own the partial section, but that's just the way it is.
Has anybody talked to Ms. Lane in the background?
I haven't yet, I don't know, is she living there? Because you know she had a fire.
I don't think she has.
Yeah, the background, she had a fire. It's been, or like, no, somewhere or something, she had a fire.
Mr. Privet has offered to make that introduction and, and talk me through that, I just, with COVID, I haven't done it. And then part of that house is boarded up, and so I didn't know if she was still living there.
I don't think she is.
I don't think she's living there.
No, because I'm like, they, unless they changed it, it's boarded up, and she may be living with her sister and Tracy, you know. Dean is her sister, Dean Burrows, and also, or she may be living with the town.
So we don't have to do it this way, the idea was that this would, Deboe Center wants to definitely do it for their part, the part that they own. Um, but we can turn back and get on the old rail bed, it just gives, it just leaves the town with just another street to maintain.
Well, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, we would, if we.
Utility law is too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Utility law is a question.
Well, that's something we can talk about, or see whichever is the best for the town and for the government, because we want to maintain our streets, but of course, if we can maintain less streets and get the same effect and add more to community, I mean.
But you're talking about rehab and that, right?
Right.
So whose expense is that?
We'll pay for that, we'll pay for that, and we'll pay for their driveways as well.
When you say we.
The Mountain Go.
Yeah, I mean, because right there, you're, you're we now, so you're them, they.
We have a grant. The Mountain Go Trail Alliance has a grant from the Tennessee Department of Health. And they also have a private fund, and they are all, we are also a finalist for another grant, all, that all, all will go into this section.
So after this section, are we through with Mountain Go not including the section from Mountain Outfitters to Tower Bank?
No, we still got Dollar General to the interstate, which should happen next summer, I think.
Is that the bridge you're talking?
No, that's to the bridge.
To the bridge, to the Waffle House.
Yeah, to the Waffle House.
But then how does it get from the Waffle House to Tower Bank, or is it?
We have a grant, the town has a grant, we, the town, has a grant.
Okay.
To do that, and it's, that's a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that's matched ninety-five to five. So the Mountain Go Trail Alliance is providing fifty thousand to match that nine hundred and fifty thousand that's coming from the state. And so that, the scope of that is from Sonic to Fairmont Street. Because the TDOT requested that we do all the bike lanes, that we incorporate that whole thing, it's a way to sort of make, make a more permanent solution for the bike lanes to get through town. But we'll, we, as a council, will need to, once that grant is finalized, we'll need to select an engineer and figure that out, how that's going to happen.
Then now the bridge, is that going to be a state project?
The bridge is going to be a state project.
Okay.
So the, the way that worked is, we wrote a grant to fix the railroad bridge and got that grant from TDOT. And then TDOT said, we'd actually like to take the bridge down because Monegoel owns the bridge, so at some point, we'll have to deed the bridge to TDOT so they can take it down. And they are going to.
Well, look, look.
There's always been a conflict.
Yeah, so.
They, they are going to then build a new bridge that includes the trail on the new bridge. So if that is in design, the, it's got a project number, uh, but I don't know how far in design it is.
So, but we'll still lack one section from Ms. Lane's done property to where?
Ms. Lane.
That's Mr. Privet's.
So on that next, that next construction project will go all the way past Michael's up to that tree, like, whatever the name of that street is.
Hmm, that's up there, that's.
That Lanning Hill or Laurel Trail was.
Yeah, that one, it'll go all the way to there.
But now that leaves the corporate city limits, because once you get to, um, Hatties, Marys down there, then that's the end of the corporate city limits, so that would be county.
Good, so, we leave them out.
Yeah, it is, I mean, this has been identified with the, with Marion County Election Commission, so, yeah. That takes it out. Now, it does run.
So the current section is.
Yeah, the current section is, but then there is a way that somehow it goes back in this way and it runs into a strip that goes to Campbell Subdivision, but the whole road doesn't go with it. I don't even know what that strip is, because remember it connects, remember it connects and takes you into that section of Campbell Subdivision that comes out?
Yeah, yeah.
We can look at sixteen and go from there, I mean, it's unusual dark brown to say look.
Okay, anyway, that, that was.
Did you name something?
Mr. Train.
No, I'm just warming up.
Okay, okay.
You've been here for two hours.
I want to see what's, how it all works.
We're trying to figure it out, so.
Anyway, we don't have to take any action on that, I just, uh, we had, we had gotten everybody's impression on it, uh, at the workshop, and I told them I'd have, have that.
Well, did you let them know that our insurance does call up and cover volunteers, so we could come with some volunteers and working on that? So we can help the guys out in particular now, since there's so many things going on with our staff?
We've got a draft of that, and I should have, Patrick has a draft of it, and we should have that ready for the next council meeting, hopefully.
Yeah, if we could, if we could, it'd be right up there, all the things, so. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Jordan? Any comments or anything?
Uh, uh. What you're talking about from there?
Yeah. I got plenty of comments, Jordan.
They're going to give us the, the comments from Facebook, if they got them at the end, like, citizen's hearing, so, but. Anybody? Jessica? Jessica, she's, Bella here.
Well, the, um, I, I was approached by one of my neighbors, uh, as to whether or not the town could put a, a trash can at Laurel Lake where people fish, and, uh, when we talked about it at the workshop, yes, we can handle the trash in there, but it would not be, uh, the city would not be able to maintain picking up trash there. And then we also had concerns about the animals getting in those trash cans, so I think that's still going to need to be discussed further as to what options we have for that.
In my programs, I mentioned to you, talk to Jodeen, maybe the Boy Scouts could do something if we have the right container there in the summer months or busier months, see, you know, and then, you know, but I think we're going to have to bring our volunteers too to do that. I mean, I think if people really want things done, we need volunteers, not only organizations to do it. And maybe even, you know, I don't know how they're handling community service, but, you know, there are some things with that, but it'd have to be worked into a program. Hopefully, it's no other costs to the town, and right now, we know that our guys are very, very thin. What they're doing, and gals, you know.
And the other issue that is on the minds of everybody is the recycling, and, uh, Franklin County has made it clear that Monegoel residents can use the recycling, um, containers at the Swanee facility, but they are not to put household garbage there. And so that should be up and running until we can get something more permanent at our own convenience center.
The, um, a couple of things, if you don't mind, um, I do want to say that we did get an issue from the comp trailer about Executive Order seventy-one, and we are in the process right now, we've worked on it today, uh, trying to get, if we have to go remote, into live stream at the same time. So we're going to work out the process according to the order, if we have to go that way. This, uh, executive order does go till February the, um, twenty-seventh, is that correct? Right now, and it kept going into March, which means we're limited to ten, to ten people at a meeting. So we're not, you know, we're just going to have to rotate them in and out, but we can have the Facebook live. But we're also trying to come up with that backup system as we build our social media. And that's something else, do we want to run a position, I know you had mentioned that? You know, we know many of the, many of the things we need in a job description, if we want to get someone to do some of our social media, some of our support, you know, if we want to run that job, to see if there's someone out there, because it's just going to continue going and growing. Here's the thing that I am, well, if it works the way it has in the past, and of course, that was called stimulus money in two thousand twelve, was it twelve? Ten, twelve, but anyway, that money was, you know, you had to be prepared to get it, like with pandemic money, there'll be money that will help pay for some of these things after it starts coming down the channel. And it is going to happen both with COVID and I think with the new administration, that it'll be coming in January the eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, but then, you know, the president will be sworn in. So do we want to look at coming up with, this is what we need, supported with X amount of hours to where we're getting the service that we do need, even if we do it as contract for now? And it's not, we're already paying someone to do it, uh, with a contract, but there's no job description there.
Yes, I think the first thing is figure out what we want, and then figure out a job description associated with that.
Well, I think, and again, I think we know basically what we want, you know, I'm talking about the social media support, being able to put, you know, connect the dots whenever we have a meeting with the local media stations, to be able to make sure the media is out there, in particular this, this time. I mean, I'm being sort of generic, but I do know what I feel like we need. Uh, now, of course, we did mention this, and, um, and we'll just dig that out. We do need a website update, whether we go with WIC or whether we go with something else, Ben Loman can let us know tomorrow if we can transfer everything. Ben Loman owns that site, you know, actually, they're the ones that host it, so if we can transfer all that over to a template like we were talking about, those things can happen. You know, and as you say, they're not as complex as they used to be, it just takes some time putting them together. Uh, I did find this out, there is, I talked to the chairperson of nine-one-one, they have their own IT people, there's nobody, they have people there with, with their software. There's no local person, it's hard to keep that up and going. And so I think we're already doing that, so that we want to put enough things, if this is what we're really paying for, because that contract apparently, and again, it's not a contract, but that situation's going up to five hundred a month right now, and what are we getting for?
So there is or is not a contract?
Is not, but there's some kind of agreement, they think that they have a contract, because they've been paying four hundred dollars a month, and now they, they tell me they were going up to five hundred, exactly. Was this two weeks ago, they, uh, that I found this out, and I'm like, okay. And of course, we said we would just, we mentioned posting something, and then, you know, hiring someone to do this stuff. I mean, I'd plan on talking to Ben Loman anyhow, just haven't had a chance to find out, because in the past, when this, first the website was created, they were the ones that could host it and could bring it over into anything with whoever was creating that.
Yeah, so that, what, what I mean by a job description is, I, I think you're right, we all know in a general sense what we want. From a specific sense, you know, what are the parts on the website that need to be updated on a daily, on a weekly, on a monthly basis? What, how many social media posts do we want to have happen on a monthly basis, and what are they about? And I, I think we can, we can nail down some of that, and it'll help create a picture of what, a, a, a more detailed picture of what we need. And then we can find out who that person is to do it, whether that's a contract person or.
Yeah, well, I think at, at the point that there's some things that, you know, we will have to do, but I mean, I'll just ask the council now, if you want to, if you and I want to work on it together, if they don't mind, come and get a job description and get it posted before the next meeting, because I think this is crucial in particular in where we have to go to remote, and we could do this within a week, and then get it out there and run it for ten days, and then see what we can get, you know, just to be fair. Because I think we know, we both said that, I mean, you and I were talking before, you know, we're talking, we're not breaking any sunshine laws, we'll clarify this, you know. But if, like, we said, we, it needs to be updated, information needs to be put on at least weekly, you know, we can't put on some things till monthly. There's going to be communications, you know, coming from, well, we said that today, the, uh, the office of the mayor, which will be from all of us, you know, these meeting notices, other things, contacting the other media, you know, giving them access to say, uh, here's what we're doing, you know, do you want to connect, do you want to be invited? And not only the messenger, the Herald, the, the Chattanooga, you know, the Marion County paper, because it's Marion County, willing by Franklin, but I don't know if they will. But those type of things will be, and there's something that we can say, you know, this is what we need done, this is where we're building, it may be this amount of time here now, but it may go down to this later. So if the council's agreeable, if we want to meet while we're setting, trying to set up remote access, which is, this is a requirement under this, um, executive order, if we come to that point, you know, if we're total shutdown, we will have to have that be able to go real time. So if you are, are agreeable, I mean, you're, you're welcome to, it'll be, you know, maybe you'll have ten people, and we'll just schedule doing it this week when we can, if you want to do that.
Sure, sure.
Maybe we'll forgive you gang.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do this virtual test run probably in the next couple of days.
Well, that's what I was saying, since now, I know, well, all but Thursday, I'm out of town for most of the day Thursday, but I'll be here Tuesday and Wednesday and probably Friday.
Yeah, or Friday.
Yeah, well, we'll get it done before then, we can get it back.
It'll be remote, isn't it?
Yeah, it'll be remote, so, and that's something else we did talk about, where all of our employees and the people that will be invited to whichever meeting format we go with, that, uh, we can actually contact them, them, you know, remotely, so. And then we will be able to have a platform to inform the public as well as having OCTV, and then, of course, that we can have a backup of everything we're doing. But I mean, we're sort of doing this real time. It'll be better as we go, right?
It'll be fun.
It already is fun, so, but that's.
As long as we're not paying out this five hundred dollars a month.
Well, I mean, we, I don't know, I don't know, we need to talk about that this week.
Yeah, we, well.
Okay.
I just don't. Another month of a contract.
I think if we clarify, one of the early things is to clarify.
There is no contract.
There, there's no, and if Ben Loman owns the site, and we have full access to that, we figure out what that access looks like and make sure that's in our control, then.
It can be transferred.
We own the domain.
Well, Ben Loman, that's what I'm saying, and see, all that information is, well, I'm not, I'm not a tech, but I understand a little bit. They own the domain, they house all, everything for us, they can.
I think we own the domain.
Well, I mean, we own it, but they, but they hope, Ben Loman hosts, is our host.
Is our host.
Yeah, our domain host, so they host the information for us on their server, so they're really the one that can, can, well, as you and I talked about, can protect that for us. And we can move that platform over to another platform without, but we need.
And then we'll take the, that domain with us to a platform, if we choose to change platforms.
Yeah, if we choose to, I mean, you know, that's something we need to decide too, but that's something we can talk about and put together on this and go from there. I was just saw that St. Marion County.
Yeah, the, the school system.
Okay, all right, we, all right. So, but anyway, if that's, if you are agreeable with that, I mean, you're welcome to be here, we're not breaking the sunshine law, we're going to do it as a workshop format, and you're welcome to come too. We're just trying to get our, you know, our technology together, everybody's welcome to come to the party, if your ten people are like, that's right.
It's a Zoom party.
That's right, it's going to be a Zoom party.
Or a Zoom meeting party.
Uh, the other thing we have is a public hearing notice that will be according to TCA thirteen dash seven, two oh three. The notice hereby is given by a public hearing, which will be held on January the fifth, twenty twenty-one, at five forty-five in the conference room in Monegoel. City Hall, the purpose of this hearing is to receive comments on a proposed CDBG grant for sewer or water upgrades. So it'll be both, I think he needs to add that to that, that's one of the things I did ask him about, it was for imp, well, for sewer upgrades, this way he's got on here, but he can go ahead and, uh, if you're interested, party, we encourage you to attend. This is something, um, we probably need to get out there as soon as possible, since we can't, people can't attend, unless, you know, move them in and out. We need to probably request that information be submitted to Monegoelinfo@bloman.net. And the only reason I'm sending it to you is because you're here every day, you know, but, uh, that way, if they've got comments, they've got suggestions, they want to be on the agenda. Yeah, and you could send it to us or forward it to us, and that way, we can be prepared for meetings ahead of time. And Michelle, I'm going to ask you, because I know you were reading the order too, when do they have to, if they're, we're doing some of this virtual, when do you, they have to have comments in, is there a deadline date or anything on that?
Uh, they did not have a deadline date, it just in advance.
So we'd need to, to sort of look at, I mean, we all need to know, you know, getting something on the twenty-eighth, we can't really address it. I don't know where we're getting from, but, uh, I mean, it wasn't saying we'd have time to read it or something, so at least we need it, if we can get it, it's not an emergency, at least, what, five days? You think that's enough time? You, y'all know.
I have a problem, though.
You think five days, what do you think, three days, what's, what's the timeframe we prefer getting information?
I don't even know if we have to get five days.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Three, three, is that good?
Yeah, we can take comments as long as we get them, but we guarantee if they're in three days ahead.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're going to get them, now, everybody usually gets their packet ahead of time, they want it before that day, and they try to get it one.
But we're, we're talking about a CD, we're talking about a CDGB public meeting, not a workshop.
No, I'm talking about anything. Yeah, this is on the fifth.
Right.
Yeah, so we need those now, but I'm saying any comments, since we can't have a ten people in a meeting. If we can get that information, and that's the reason we're going to post Monegoelinfo@bloman.net for now, then if they will get it to us, at least five days, within three at the most, we can address it at prior meetings or events, but we're going to have to have some format or form. And I'm just saying, what do you think, three days?
How about it?
If we can get it to five, it'd be better, you know.
So that would be, three days would be the Friday before the Monday meeting.
Yeah, well, but you, Claire, and let me ask you this, some people are not here on the weekends, so do we want to ask the Thursday before?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I'm talking three working days, I'm not talking three days with weekends. So I'd say at least, because most things are like working days, you know.
Typically, we'll have, we won't have the agenda for the meeting at the workshop, will we?
I can do it. I mean, after you discuss anything, I can, I can have it the next day.
But now we do that a week before.
We do that a week before.
And if we can get it a week before, it's good, you know, well, actually, it's five days because of that, because we have last Monday, and this is, so it's five, a five day.
Well, for, for a normal meeting, so the special call meeting, everybody's going to know what's happening at the special call meeting, because it's a special call meeting.
And that's all that's happening.
But for, for the standard meetings, I would think that if Debbie can get the agenda together after, the day after the workshop, and then we can post it, that, that would potentially give people three or four days posted to make comments. And then if comments were in by the end of the day.
Thursday.
Thursday, that would give us a full working day to process them.
Right.
There'd be two full working days before the meeting, because we'd have the day of the meeting.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to give people the opportunity, as well as giving us enough time to read something and look at it, because then everybody feels more comfortable with it, sure. So if that works, we can get that information out to the public, yeah.
So we'll, we'll accept comments up to the end of business day, the Thursday before the council meeting, is that what?
Well, I mean, if, if we're going to be addressing them, I think if we're going face, if we're doing Facebook and they're seeing the comments, we may get the comment, but that doesn't mean we can address it.
Yeah.
It's just like with Mr. Waller's letter, huh, we got it on the twenty-eighth, and really, none of us were as familiar as we, with those properties or what's happened. Uh, we found out once we addressed, and they're not sure about the other, you own it, so that's a little short term to address it.
Exactly.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, I mean, in that way, we're not in that situation, so we can at least give a fair answer to everybody, so. If that works with you on, yeah. Uh, if we find out we have to go remote, hopefully by maybe Wednesday, maybe by Wednesday, Thursday, you know, I mean, the way, well, we'll plan on having something if we have to go remote, we'll be ready to do that.
Well, for the planning commission meeting next week, if I'm, I'm understanding you correctly, you would like to do that one in person, unless we are.
I would like to continue doing it in person, that way, if, say, if Les, if Leslie wants to come, she can come, you know, in cover for me here, that's not breaking any things. If somebody wants to come, they're here, we'll notify the parties, they're on the agenda to be here, um, and I think, you know, if we can do it in person, I think we need to. But if we can't, then we're prepared to go remote. You know, if, I mean, we don't know what we're dealing with, you know.
Right, for sure.
So, um, but that's what, um, I have, if nobody has anything else, I mean, we're just going to, oh, there's one other thing I do want to mention to you, um, to protect our employees, as we said, we're going to take care of our employees, but, um, I'm noticed a lot of the, even the banks are, are by appointment only. I know we open town hall, we put up shields, but I just feel that for what we need to do right now at town hall, that we do it by appointment only if you need to come in. And otherwise, that things can be paid through the window, just to make sure, because, you know, we didn't have, you know, some, some employees that, you know, their immune system might be weaker, and just to protect them. And, uh, I know, uh, there's rarely, you know, that many people, but they can call in, they can come in, you know what I'm saying? It's just, uh, basically appointment only, so, y'all don't, I think that's a great idea right now. President's not commenting, what are you thinking?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, I mean, you know, it's just something that I feel that we need to do right now because of the other things that, you know, and it is a public venue and area. Do we have hand sanitizer for all the areas, and, okay, and we have masks if people need them, and for the employees, and we have gloves if they need them. I just want to make sure that we've got all the, the things to protect, and also the fire department, police department, whatever they need, you know, in this area that we're taking care of, you know, our employees. And also the people workout at the convenience center, and what everyone calling, every department has the stuff they need, so. All right, folks, um, is there any comments from the citizens there?
We had a, we had a couple, um, one of them is from your wife, she says that, uh, you're sitting too close.
My wife?
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, so we, uh, we also had one from Mary Beth Best, I am submitting this request on behalf of Mr. Jim Waller, who is incapacitated at this time, he implores you to consider his multiple requests to address the issue of the cleanup of North Bluff. He has recently sent another letter in regards to the issue to the new administration. Please respond as how you plan to correct this problem, thank you.
Well, did, I'll call it, we said that the chief of police are now addressing that, and he's going to go, he did report on one of the properties is being cleaned up in the condition of it, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, I'm not from here, and the other one, he is going to go check with the owner, we're going to check with the, uh, pecker work that was sent, and he's going to make sure that's addressed. So the police will be checking on both those.
Wonderful, all right, we have another one from Mary Beth, she says, thank you for the visuals, very helpful to the public. That was one of Nate's campaign ideas and one of the reasons I voted for him, nice to see it in action.
We'll try to make it so it's easier to read next time.
We're going to figure, we're going to figure that one out.
We're going to paint the wall, that's what's going to happen, it's going to be.
Uh, let's see. Can you have meetings through the window, why in-person meetings, that's from Jess.
Well, we don't have to have meetings through the window, and right now, we can have ten people in here, I mean, it's just, right now, we're not set up to do, I mean, I guess, uh, Nate, I guess you could stay home, but you can vote right now, you know, that's your call, this is, you know, that's the way it is, we didn't write the law. So, but we are trying to get to the point, we can have meetings, and if you need some shields, we have some shields back here.
Okay.
Now, I'm just saying, if you do, we do have the shields that people can use if they want to.
All right, so we want to make sure that she is happy. All right, and that is it.
All right.
Well, if there's nothing else to, uh, be, uh, discussed, then we have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm going to, we adjourn tonight.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it.